Inkster City Council Meeting is now called to order. Everyone, please stand for the prayer. Mike, can you give us, bleed us some prayer tonight?
Heavenly Father, once again, we come meek and humble before Thy presence, Lord, thanking You for another day, Lord. Thanking You for bringing us this far, Lord. As we assemble with our council and mayor, Lord, we ask that You would guide them, lead them in the ways that they would go to help our city, Lord. We ask, Lord, we will continue to grow as a city. In the precious name of Jesus, we ask, amen.
Thank you, Mike. All right, everybody keep standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor.
Present.
Present.
Present. Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
And Councilwoman Richardson. And Councilwoman Rutledge, present. Mayor, we have a call.
All right. We, uh, got the roll call done. Everybody had a chance to look at the agenda? Who didn't look at? Oh, okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Been properly moved and supported, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. All right, tonight, we're gonna have a presentation. We're going to, uh, recognize and honor the graduating seniors, uh, who live in the city of Inkster and go to various different school districts. Lawanna Abney Mitchell. Ashana Butts. We're gonna call each, uh, each student, one by one, hand them their certificate. If, uh, the parents or family members or anybody would like to take a picture, we'll pause for a picture and then we'll call the next student up. And then we'll get a picture of everybody at the end, end of, uh, honoring the students. Okay. You got the certificate?
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. As I call your name, please step forward and receive your certificate. We are here honoring the 2025 graduates in the city of Inkster. Hannah Abdul Aziz. Grayson Alexander. Lauren Alexander. Andrew Ball. That's not you. Diamond Monae Brownlee Crosby. Ashawn Childs. There we go. David Dillard. Congratulations. Aba- Abigail Dent. May, I'm sorry, Zaire Gardner. Darren Michael Garrison. Kiana Hargrove. I'm sorry. I got, I'm sorry. What's your name? Emmanuel Gardner. Did I already get Zaire Gardner? What about Darren Michael Garrison? Kiana Hargrove. Jiana, Jiana Harris? Zayanna. Zayanna. Dana Howard, Deanna? Deanna Howard. Avier Jimenez. Aleah Lawrence. Naveya Lewis. Deasia Mitchell. Kania Mitchell. Madison Monae. Aiden Golden. Congratulations, 2025 graduates. We will be post, we will be heading over afterwards to the cafeteria area for refreshments.
So I had to bring you back in here so we could read on record where all the students received a pen with a graduation hat on it, um, from the mayor in the city of Inkster. And we just thank everybody for coming out.
All right. Mr. Superintendent, would you like to say anything?
As they walk out of the room. How you doing?
I'm doing good.
Good, good, good.
All right, thank you, appreciate you being here. Everybody, it's good to celebrate kids doing well, graduating from high school. That's a good thing. Now, consent agenda, do we have a motion? Been properly moved and supported, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes. Boards and commissions, we have any nominations today? Okay, no ordinances, new business.
Through approval, to place snack and beverage vending machines at the Inkster Police Department and Inkster City Hall.
Second. Properly moved in second, any discussion?
I think we propose some alternate places, like the police station, can we add? Wherever we don't already have vending machine.
Okay.
I was gonna say, it's already says Police Department and City Hall. I said, it's already say Police Department and City Hall.
Oh, that's what it says?
Oh, it's, it's an updated agenda.
This the old one I?
Mike, cuz it's. Listen, Alum?
Okay. Oh, okay. Okay, so the motion is to place them at Inkster Police Department, Inkster City Hall.
We already have machines here, right? Is that what we said?
Okay. All right. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes. So move.
Second.
Been properly moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes. Now we're, public participation. Okay. Director Lisa Bernie.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, just a couple of events, um, that will be coming up. Um, on, uh, May 22nd, Thursday, we have our Zumba Blaze class. So if you guys are interested in participating in Zumba Blaze, that will be on May 22nd. Um, you can purchase tickets here at the rec center, at the police station, or if you follow the social media, you will see an availability to do cash app payments in advance. We do encourage citizens to, uh, purchase tickets in advance. That allows us to prepare accordingly for these events, um, to make sure that we have enough attendance. And there's always some form of refreshment prizes and things of that nature that we always give out at every event, so we wanna make sure we can accommodate everyone. Um, the next major event is our Memorial Day Parade. Uh, I am proud to announce that we have forty participants, forty large participants for the parade. So it will be a nice turnout, a nice show. You guys come out, um, and enjoy. Uh, we will be lining up. Uh, the parade will begin at 12 o'clock. So those that are participating will get there early for the procession and it's gonna be a really nice time. Um, another thing we have come up on the 29th is our Hustle and Groove with DJ Chris Kelly. So again, if you would like to attend that event, you can purchase the tickets in the same location, here at the rec, or at the station, or online. And backed by popular demand is Trap Bingo. Everybody's excited about Trap Bingo. So you guys make sure you come out and support. We have a ton of fun at Trap Bingo. And last but not least, on the 31st, um, the department will be partnering with housing for our Pursuit of Happiness Resource Fair. This is gonna be an amazing fair for the community. Um, lots and lots of vendors. Uh, we have Xfinity, DTE, uh, the water, everybody's gonna be there. If you are looking for assistance as far as, um, any just resources to help, even including mental health resources. We definitely, um, encourage you guys to come out. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. So we wanna make sure we are taking care of our minds as well as our body. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Helen?
Sorry, somebody had a question. Um, anyone is welcome to attend any of our events. We encourage everyone to come out. Thank you.
Helen?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Helen. I'm a resident of Westland, Michigan. I've been out here since 1971. The reason why I'm at this meeting, the reason why I'm at this meeting, I'm inquiring about Congresswoman Tolee. She used to have an office out here, I'm trying to find out what happened. Do anyone know?
Yeah, she, she decided not to keep the office that she had open in Inkster City Hall. She does have an office in the city of Detroit.
Correct.
Her chief of staff was here earlier. She must have left already, Larissa. But she does have, I don't know where the next closest office, but I know she has office in Detroit.
Yes, I've been there before, but it's quite a ways.
It is.
But, um, my next question is, um, there was an event at the library during the ice storm and it had to be canceled. And I'm trying to find out, I'm doing my research, my ancestry, my history, and I'm trying to find out when will the young lady come back to this area? Does anyone know?
Do you know who put the event on?
The library, I'm going to assume, but I'm not for sure. I've been to the library several times, made several calls, and no one knows anything.
I'm not sure about that one. Anybody from the library board here? Dr. AJ is here.
No, I'm sorry. No, the reason I stood is the meeting that he is referring to is the Friends of the Village of Public Library. We have our meeting at Anna Barnes. It's very, very important that we, as we, as a community, support the library, the library. They also have a mutual relationship in the community. We need membership, we need affiliation. You're gonna talk to the mayor and come back to what she mentioned. The young lady, during the, uh, the legacy and trying to find out her ancestry, uh, she was there, I've been present at her, uh, events. I do not have a lot of details now, but I do know that she is planning to come back. And I will search through and if I could give more contact information, I'll be able to try to share what I have about located in my telephone now. Trying to get her to come through. But yeah, she's very good and she has given a lot of research within, um, the Inkster area. So hopefully others will be able to join her in this county.
I think it's very important for our children to find out who we are and who that we belong to. One other thing is in regard to the Wayne County Sheriff, uh, Department monitoring, uh, Laura Hiron, Inkster Park. Are they doing their job diligently? Because I have been out there, my son has been out there, and we have rescued plenty of dogs out there. And they need our help. One day, we went out there, me and my son, and some of these kids that stays in the area, they put down, uh, fish hooks. And my son got some caught in his gym shoes and some got caught in the babies. When I say babies, I call them babies. The cats and the dogs got caught in their footsteps as well. We need have patrol out there to protect these babies. We, we must speak for them and be their voice.
Hold on, hold on, sir. I mean, we are, this is public comments, this is when we call your name, you come up to the microphone and speak. Marita Bonnie? Marita Bonnie? Nobody? Okay. She left? Okay. Maureen? Mon- Huh? Don't pronounce the Y. Okay. Yeah, she corrected me last time.
Just, just pronounce Monahan.
Monahan.
No Y in, I know it's got a Y in it, but it's not how you pronounce it. Um, I'm, I'm, uh, here again asking about the sewers. I haven't heard from, I think his name is Bivens. I saw some people out on Mount Vernon. I asked them what they're doing, they said they were doing the sewers on Mount Vernon. I said, are you doing them down Amherst? They said they didn't know. I haven't heard anything. Um, my garage now is sagging. I actually have somebody else come out, cuz it's a two and a half car garage. That's gonna cost me some more money to fix. And then my neighbor, two doors down, said her garage just, door just fell off. And they came out and told her it was a structural issue. So I'm still looking for some answers. What's going on with four or five houses on Amherst?
I thought we, uh, Darryl Davis came out to your house and took a look at your garage.
Did the what now?
Darryl Davis, didn't he come to your house and look at your garage?
No, I think it was Carrie and Bivens, believe.
Okay.
I, but I haven't heard from anybody.
You didn't talk to him after they finished looking? Latoya? Yep.
Yep. Good, 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 good. I, I'll be polite, but I didn't like his response when he left me about what the problem was. I won't say it, but I won't, didn't like his response. Um, my next question is ordinance. Um, on Amherst, we have many, many, many houses where people don't, either can't or won't cut their grass. I don't know if the ordinance officer still lives on our street or not, but I wonder why nothing's being done. An ordinance officer did live on Amherst at one time.
Oh, you talking about Don Wall?
It was a woman on our street, but I don't know if she's.
She does not, she does not work for us.
Okay. Is, I'm just wondering if ordinance is out, cuz the street looks terrible.
We'll call them and let them, give them the address and they'll come by and issue a citation.
Uh, one other thing, there's a tree that it's on customer, I mean, um, like not on their property and it has nothing. Uh, it's not on city property.
Okay.
But it has no leaves. I mean, you can see big pieces of this tree falling. I wouldn't wanna live next door to this thing. It, it looks like it's gonna come down at any time. Can you or this, can the city do anything to the people who live in the house?
No, if that's their property, that's their tree. So we can't just come on their property and do whatever we wanna do.
I mean, so you couldn't say something, I mean.
I mean, unless they're violating some, some sort of city ordinance, we can't. You can, if, as a neighbor, you can go talk to them, but that's their tree.
Okay.
And of course, for them to cut it down costs money.
Yeah, I, yeah. My neighbor wanted me to trim my tree and I said, I already did last year and it cost a thousand dollars.
Right.
Which we usually don't have. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Michael Kelly and Ed Miller.
How's everybody doing today?
Great, great.
Great, great, great. Why don't we just give guys some praise real quick? Is that all right? All right. All right. Well, we've come to bring some exciting news, after all the bad news we've been hearing up here. So I'm just gonna read something to you from this point, okay? It says, "We're thrilled to announce, exciting news. We're thrilled to announce that we, the funkerteer dancers, have officially auditioned for America's Got Talent." Thank you. "We want to thank all of our amazing supporters for your unwavering encouragement. Now we need your help. Please download the America's Got Talent app and sign up for all of our platforms and stay updated on our journey. Your support means the world to us and we can't wait to make you proud. America's Got Talent Season 20 premieres on Tuesday, May 27th at 8:00 PM on NBC. And we're just getting started." So we, thank you. Thank you. So that's myself, Michael Kelly, Ed Miller, Tony Warren, and Jeffrey Healy. And, uh, we don't know the episode yet, because they're gonna let us know the week before, Wednesday before it airs that Tuesday. But just know that we represent Inkster well. And we're gonna continue to represent the well, right? Amen. So we'll see y'all at the top.
Gabe Henderson.
Good afternoon, family. How's everybody doing today? You know, it's, it's wonderful to be in the city of Inkster. I've been here seventy-eight years, you know? And I, I have joined my stay and I hope it be, until I get to be a hundred. But anyway, because this is wonderful place. I, I wanna say that, uh, you know, we never had a whole lot of money. You know, we've had a good spirit and all that, you know, that village atmosphere, especially on the, on the south side, you know what I'm saying? You know how things, we work together. And we gotta regain that attitude about, uh, helping one another, loving one another. Especially, you know, old folks. I'm almost to that point that where, you know, I might need a little help. And the young folks, we gotta really tune into those, you know, they's good. Okay, today, to my understanding, Malcolm X, hundred years old, he would, if he was still living today, and he ain't good, he ain't all those being past. If that tragic situation, no, no, seriously, hadn't happened, he'd still be here today. But you know, sometime, good people, you know, their lives are cut short, it's cut short. One, the greatest, his life, of course, thirty-three and one-third, yeah, it's cut short and all that. Trying to do good, trying to get us to love one another, you know? That's something we gotta really work at. And, okay, you know, a, a person came up to me and they was talking about, uh, a business, need some help to get it cleaned up. Beautification, you know, I think we got, maybe got two good men and the rest of, we got a whole, some older, older ladies trying to keep it together. So we, I, we need some, 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 some old men to, to work with us on beautification, cuz sometimes we got these major projects where you got gangsters from the other neighborhood wanna dump all their trash and all that, and they, you know, make it, make us look bad and all that, put salt in the wounds, you know? So we, we gonna need some old men to come, stand up and help us in beautification. Okay, uh, we meet the second Monday of the month, our meetings. Four thirty, right here, right here. Okay, and then, you know, we got our ongoing, our dumpster sites is gonna be, uh, usually it's the last Saturday, but except for this month, it was a little early and all that, where we can get rid of our stuff and all that, okay? And, uh, we need, need some help. You know, Mr. Dozier. I wanna say about, I mean, he got before the council one, one time. And he, he's a Goodfellow guy, okay? And he got up and, uh, he, he shed a tear, he started shedding the tear. I said, I hate to see a grown man cry, so I joined the Goodfellas, but you know, I'mma, I'mma shed some tears. But you know what, I, I, I left my onion at home. I thank Dozier, I thank Dozier, he, he had a hundred. But anyway, we need some help, and I thank you for that. Like I said, uh, and Malcolm X, he would be a hundred today. He was a great man and all that. And, uh, I think that's all I have to say. Yeah, do, 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 okay. Yeah, I, I love y'all. I love y'all. Yeah, I think that, okay. All right. Okay. I think that's it. Okay, okay, appreciate it.
Octavia Smith.
Hi, good evening, mayor, council, residents.
Good evening.
Glad to be here to make this announcements. So you guys know that Wednesday, June the fourth, is what?
Market Day.
Market Day, it's the opening day of the Inkster Task Force Farmers Market. And we will be, this year, the second year, at Amphitheater on Inkster Road and Michigan Avenue. We are looking for you all to support the market. Due to funding, our market is only gonna be from June the fourth until the first Wednesday in September. So we're there every Wednesday from four to seven, unless there's some stormy weather and they encourage us not to go. So please come out, purchase some fruits, vegetables. We have all kinds of vendors from our city. People who make things, sell things. Come on and support Inkster Task Force Farmers Market and just have a good time. Opening day should be really fun, so come out and support your city. This is our fifth year. And it's a lot of y'all ain't even seen in five years. So come on out to the market. Thank you, everyone, thank you, council.
Thank you. Barbara Cooper.
Good evening, mayor and council, it's so glad to be back. God is good. I just want to, uh, make a couple of announcements for the Goodfellas and for the city. Everybody come on out next Monday for the parade. We need to show support for our city. Come on out. The Goodfellas are gonna be part of the parade, gonna have our canisters, our donations. Please come out and help the Goodfellas. The Goodfellas need help and support. I'm trying to get more young men and women to come and join the Goodfellas. Because if they don't come in and help, and they be waiting for us and we in our sixties, seventies, and eighties, we need help. We need help with the Goodfellas. And I heard something today that just crushed me. A young lady was in the building. She had a leaping Afro and I said, wow, Angela Davis. And she looked at me and she said, who? I said, Angela Davis. And she said, I don't know who that is. I said, oh, Lord, no. I said, baby, you go get on your phone and you pull up Angela Davis so you'll know who she is. We have to teach our kids the history. They're losing it. Anytime somebody tell me, I think Dr. Martin Luther King was a civic, you think? You mean, you don't know? You mean, you don't know? I was like, uh-uh, we losing a battle and it's our fault, because we need to make sure that they know. And when Juneteenth come, we need to make sure they know what Juneteenth is all about. But on June thirteenth, the Inxta Goodfellows are gonna have their fish dinners, the catfish and the perch. But I need to ask the mayor a question. The elevators, will they be working? Cause that's gonna... Thank you, Clint.
And it broke down again while he was here. And he broke down again. There's some parts and they've kinda told me they were supposed to be here Wednesday. They didn't come, they didn't show up. They, I called Friday, they said they were gonna show up Friday, they didn't show up. I called again today. They say they have the parts in and that they'll be here in the morning, they say, how early can we be here? I say, we, we'll be here at nine. So, I'm expecting someone at nine to service the elevator. So, I've been on them, I've been adamant about it, uh, we've had some issues with, with the company. Uh, but we're making every stride to make sure the elevator is working. And the mayor and I will have conversations going forward about the elevator as well. So, we're doing the best we can and the city's providing the... It's just, the company is kinda lagging and giving us the service that we...
And that was a question, uh, come... Hard for someone. Back, uh, up, whatever.
Okay, I, about that, because I handle things as the director, but there's certain things that if I can't get what I need, it's something about our mayor. Makes things happen a little bit better and a little bit faster, so I will lean to make sure we get that, what we need for our, for our community, so we're gonna work together on that. Okay.
And other fundraiser is... Trip and... September, September the thirteenth, and the trip is a hundred and fifty dollars. You don't have to pay it all at one time. I broke it down, thirty-seven dollars and fifty cent a month, and then you pay for by August thirteenth, alright? But we want everybody to come and join us over in Mansfield, Ohio, to the Bible Walk. And, uh, we looking for it. So, you're gonna be seeing me quite a bit walking around with flies in my hand, letting you know, uh, when it is. But I do appreciate you, uh, Clint. And I was holding up the meeting, cause I'm trying to give it a chance for the, uh, elevators, uh, to get fixed. And stove was working pretty good last week, so we, we think that the stove is gonna continue to work, uh, in the kitchen. Uh, my other thing was, uh, the electrical, uh, where we can't plug. And it's running out, it's picking up.
I appreciate bringing that to attention.
Mm-hmm.
See, at City Hall, Charlie Crutchfield, our special projects director, who's trying to find us resource. So, when you give me things like that, it helps me develop my list of what's needed, so we can prioritize what, what get attention first. As, take care of everything in this building.
Okay.
Groundbreaking ceremony today, like, and coming and... So, there's a lot of things, God is moving and he just takes a little...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, thank you. Miranda Davis.
They wanna know what time the fish fry is. Mayors, city council, residents, good ev, good evening. Um, as much as I appreciate the, the pipes that we are putting in throughout the city, I know this is work that is necessary and needed. Um, I have family on John Daly, near the site where they house all of the equipment. And I cannot say how awful the dust is. And I know we're trying to spray water to keep the dust down, which causes a muddy mess. But the houses are just caked with, you know, the, the, from all the dust. Um, you open your doors, your cars, everything is just staying so dirty. You can't breathe that in every time those big trucks go down John Daly. It's just a cloud of dust that's over there. And I don't see how the spraying is working, there's just caked on, dust on the ground. Um, I don't know what we can do, because, you know, that site is right there in the middle of a resident, you know, residential area. Seems like we could've found a different spot for it, but since it's there, I don't know how long the project is gonna last. Like, are we sited for this year, next year, five years from now? I don't know. But we've gotta do something about, I don't know about the other areas, but John Daly is a mess. The road is crumbling from all of the traffic of the heavy trucks, and it's just way too much dust.
Are you talking about the pump station site? Okay.
No, the, um, where you put the pipes, not the pump station, that's Carlisle and John Daly. I'm talking the Old McNair site.
Oh, you're talking about the street? We replaced the sewer pipes in the street, okay. Charlene H. Charlene H. Crystal Linton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is not often I get to attend, but because we're here on Monday nights and you have decided to come here, then I am able to get, uh, the children out. Mother Hubbard got the children out and, uh, and able to say hello to you. So, greetings, everyone, from We Rise, and I'm just gonna read this real quick, because I can talk all night. We Rise is closing our twelfth school year this year. We have grown, yeah, twelve years, we've been around. We've grown exponentially in both size and programming. We discover what our children's gifts, talents, and interests are, and we find people right here in the community to foster those gifts, like Barbara Cooper and Gabe Henderson and Octavia, Octavia Smith, and on and on. We offer life skills and career planning. Twice a month, we have a career professional come in and talk to our middle and high school students, based on what they tell us their interests are. This year, we maintained our staple activities like sewing, cooking, woodworking, African dance, and drum, and I'm sure you guys, many of you have had our African dancers out. Art and graphic design, crafts, and not just baby crafts, Martha Stewart-type crafts, and piano. To that, we added individualized tutoring plans, extended graphic design instruction, modeling, auto mechanics. And if you look outside the window right here, you'll see our garden. We've partnered with Michigan State Masters Gardener Program, as it's gonna help us through the summer, Mayor, with our garden. And I could go on and on, but our mantra at We Rise is, there is greatness in every human being. And we're just the right community to find out what our children's greatness is and foster that greatness and grow more Black history icons right out of the city of Inxta. Thank you.
Alright, where now, um, Madam Clerk had to leave for a family emergency, but you have something to read?
Uh, yep. Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Treasurer, I think City Treasurer left also, so no City Treasurer comments. Well, Councilwoman Rutherford, you might as well start with you.
No comments tonight, dear.
Okay. Councilman Bishop?
Uh, nothing from me.
Councilwoman Scott? Okay. Councilwoman Richardson?
Um, just one comment. Um, I did receive a call from a resident on Blackstone, and the complaint was about the condition of the road, and there are large ditch that are open, and they're concerned about the safety. So, I was wondering if, uh, Latoya could address that and, uh, what they're doing.
New water lines were... And about a week or two ago, they started for there, and it should be completed by June the thirteenth. By June the thirteenth, they should all be completed with the earth's topsoil and seed and the concrete work. Yes, making the repairs, yes. You're welcome.
Okay. Councilwoman Howard?
Two things. Uh, I know that the Goodfellows and the Inxta Task Force, uh, beautification, they are looking for members. So, is there a way that we can go to the school to see whether or not if these kids, some of the kids can come and help for, because don't they have, supposed to have, um, a certain amount of, uh, community time?
Some schools, yes.
Yeah, that, that would help them a lot, if we can do that.
We have the Superintendent Taylor is here, so we can adjourn this meeting and go down there and talk to him right now, and then we have, what, fifteen kids? Uh, although they're graduating, they're probably going off to college and, and jobs, but we can talk to them while we're here tonight.
And the next thing that I have in regards to the John Daly, the mess that's on John Daly, I was just talking to Latoya about that before the meeting. Uh, I'm not sure we need to put like the, uh, speed bumps, just to slow the, slow the traffic down. I've noticed the, the cars are driving really, really fast, which is bringing up the dust, along with the trucks. But I don't know, we can have, and I know I've seen some street sweeping as well. So, I don't know if we should do the street sweeping every night or every other night?
You know, we contract that out, so we don't do it ourselves. So, we usually do street sweeping twice a year.
Okay.
But we'll discuss it in the staff meeting tomorrow, what we can do to, I mean, you know, construction is messy.
I mean, construction is construction, I mean, at the end of the day, it's gonna be good, we just have to kinda put up with it. But I understand that it's around here, it's getting a bunch of it. But I know when I drive down there, it, it's the cars that's speeding down that road, that's bringing up that dust. So, maybe if we can get some extra patrol out there.
Okay.
Okay, that, that's all.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, that's all happening.
Mayor Protemp?
Yes, thank you. Uh, this past weekend, I stood alongside my colleagues as we all attended the funeral of Mark, former councilperson Marcus Hendricks. It was a beautiful celebration of life, people spoke of him very highly, he will be missed. Um, last night, for those of you who didn't catch it, Bar Rescue episode aired and it featured Inxta. Just like the Funkatiers, they showcased the positivity in Inxta up at the former John Good times, which is now Brother Smokehouse. Uh, check it out on the Paramount Network when you have a chance, Channel 241 on DTV and AT&amp;T, uh, Channel 145. Uh, today, I brought forty-six middle schoolers to City Hall to meet Mayor Nolan and other department heads, and they had a grand time. Uh, we got to tour different areas, I explained to them, soon as we got off the bus, what the veterans monument represented. Uh, a lot of them had never been to a City Hall, let alone Inxta City Hall. Um, we had a good time, they were excited, and then when I asked, hey, anybody wanna take pictures with the mayor or police chief? They made a line to take pictures, and the mayor said, y'all don't wanna take a picture with Mr. Chisholm? And nobody said anything. So, I, I guess we did a good job bringing on the City Hall. And a few of them actually went around asking employees and the mayor for their autograph. Um, but what it brought to, a realization to myself, and I said this to the mayor, was the fact that, you know, we have access. We know how to get in touch with our council people, and if your kids or grandkids are having an issue and they come to you, they know, you know how to navigate city government. Whereas civics isn't taught in the schools anymore. And so, I tried to ensure that I am that bridge as best I can. And instead of trying to bring the elected officials to the building, I brought the kids to the, to City Hall. Um, they learned a lot. They, when we got back to the school, they were excited, they thanked me for taking them there, and some of them didn't believe that I was actually on city council. They just think that I just work in the school building and that's it. So, to see my picture and to meet some of the staff and everything like that, it gave them hope, it gave them a different opportunity, because when they were asked, did anybody in there wanna go into government or be an elected official, nobody raised their hand. But now they have a chance to really think about, that might be something they're interested in. Um, some of them may never be in a seat of, or a position of power, and they were really ecstatic when they got to sit in our chairs, walk past and bang in the gavel and then throw it down, cause they were scared, like they weren't supposed to do it, even though they asked, we said, yes. They got to see some of the technological equipment that's in the back, the streams and record these movies. And just overall, I'm thankful that that opportunity was granted to them. And I thank Mayor Nolan for providing lunch, because that is always a thing too, are the kids gonna be able to eat? Cause some of them come to school just to eat breakfast and lunch, cause they don't have the resources at home. So, uh, thank you all who were there and able to participate, thank you, Mayor Nolan, for having us, and I greatly appreciate that.
Yeah, we definitely, definitely had a good time. Uh, my entire staff got a chance to explain to them what they did and their job, just to give them some idea of the different jobs in government and different things they can pursue, so it was definitely, definitely informational. I only have one thing, uh, I wanna let everybody know, Gabe Henderson is gonna be honored as a veteran for the city of Inxta this Thursday in Lansing. So, Senator Dana Polhake, uh, called and said, hey, who should we honor? I was like, I got somebody. Um, so he's gonna go up to Lansing Thursday, I'm gonna make sure we get some pictures and video from the ceremony, and then we can maybe take a look at it on Monday when we honor our veterans here in the city of Inxta. Can't wait to see everybody at the Memorial Day Parade, and everybody have a great night. Move to John? Been properly moved in second discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, no?